Under order, roll call.
President Byrne?
Here.
Trustees Markport?
Here.
Forster?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Takaoka?
Here.
Schenk? Oppenheim?
Here.
Okay, we have a court president, everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Jim, is this where we appoint Tom?
Yes, we have a motion to appoint trustee Cook as temporary chairperson, given President Byrne's participation by-
Is there a-
So made.
A first and a second on that?
Motion approved and-
So made.
And do you want a second?
Okay.
We got a second?
Yeah. You second.
Second or we got a second?
We need a vote?
Roll call, yes.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Schenk? Oppenheim?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries.
All right. If I'm looking at this right, none of the staff have a speaking part, except that's something that's on agenda, right? Correct? Okay, then, first item would be, citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anybody here who wants to address the board on something other than what's coming up? Okay, hearing no one. Then, next item would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through J?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second, any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenk? Takaoka?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Markport?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Unfinished additional business? Nothing correct, okay. New business in communication, approval and passage of ordinance 2021-125, an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Peddlers and Solicitors of the Vernon Hills Village Code.
I'll take this trustee Cook. The amendment before you of the village's solicitation in peddler's ordinance comes about as a result of a federal case which found that the prohibition of panhandling on public roadways without a permit was a violation of the First Amendment, which includes an individual's right to solicit funds on behalf of oneself. The amendment before you exempts solicitors who are soliciting for themselves from requiring, from the requirement to get a permit if they are soliciting on public property or commercial property with permission. That is the change, what the change effectively does is place individuals seeking funds for themselves on equal footing with charitable organizations, religious organizations, political organizations, et cetera. The idea in the holding of the case was that distinguishing those individuals and treating them differently from a religious charitable or political organization was a violation of the First Amendment. So the changes we've made clarify that in the ordinance, they make the ordinance compliant with federal law as it's recently been handed down. The other change that we've added to this ordinance in conjunction with, in consulting with the police department, is that we have, the police department has looked at the roadways in town, and they've identified Route 60, Milwaukee Avenue, Butterfield Road, and Route 45 as obviously busy intersections where soliciting on those roadways in particular would present a danger to an individual or to traveling motorists. So those roadways are restricted, however, individuals could solicit off of those roadways, as we see pretty frequently, for example, we see solicitors for organizations on Lakeview Parkway, just south or north of Route 60, but they're not out in Route 60. So we've, those are the two changes that are before you, I can answer any questions.
So somebody in the middle of an intersection would be illegal because they're a safety hazard?
Yeah, in the middle, on these road, on these particular roadways.
Okay.
Because our police department has made a finding that these roadways are, based on the speeds and the volume of traffic, it would present a danger to the individual-
And does this just then open it up for anyone to receive a permit? Or can you, or can they just go out there and solicit without a permit?
Individuals do not have to get a permit if they're soliciting for themselves.
Okay.
That is not a requirement, and it was prior to this change.
Right.
And what I'm saying is the cases that have come down have said that that type of requirement distinguishes these individuals in a unconstitutional manner.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from trustee Oppenheim? So, first of all, how was it determined that these were the particular roadways? Is there a federal standard as to the amount of traffic or the speeds or et cetera?
I'll turn that over to the police department here tonight, the staff that's here. There is no particular federal standard, I think knowledge of the area, knowledge of the roadways are going to factor into those determinations.
Yeah, I would agree, I mean, the determination we made were based on, that the intersections that are deemed to be, have the highest rate of accidents, the highest rate of traffic, and those are also the, traditionally have been the ones that we have guided people from the community to not be on. Example that Jim Furlough used with the tagging days and everything else, we've allowed them to be on Lakeview south of 60, but we've encouraged them not to be on those roadways themselves. So it's more of a commonsensical approach as far as the volume of traffic that we see on these roadways.
So they're allowed to be on Lakeview, well now they're allowed to be on Lakeview north or south of 60?
Correct.
And, okay.
I've seen an individual though on the berm on 60 that has been soliciting, she'll go out into the street area.
Right.
Right, so I mean, this is something that we've been, you know, trying to get a hold of a little bit, and obviously with the different direction we've had in the ordinance, it's been made a little bit difficult and that we want to be able to be a little bit more prepared. In that situation moving forward, we'd approach the individual and let them know, hey, you know, you're on Route 60, this is not an area that you could be at, and tell them the direction, the places where they can go and be a little bit safer. And it's really, it's really centered around, you know, that person's not trying to impede that person's ability to, you know, gather donations for themselves, but really just try to put them in the best situation, the safest location that we can do. I mean, obviously there's no road we can say is 100% safe, but one is safer, one area is safer than another.
So, just to be clear for legalese, according to the ordinance, it says shall be prohibited at all times at the following intersections due to the volume and speed of traffic. And it says all portions of these various roads. So are we referring to just the intersections or are we referring to the roadway itself along the berm, along?
Well, we're referring to the intersection because that's where, I mean, the ordinance provides that you can only solicit where traffic comes to a stop, and traffic only comes to a stop typically at signaled intersections. You know, I don't think we're having an issue with people walking in the middle of the street, and if we do, I think there are other vehicle code violations that they could be cited for, to the extent they're just walking in the middle of the roadway. So we meant to address intersections because that's where soliciting occurs. I don't think, unless the police, unless you tell me differently, I don't think we're having a problem with people just wandering into the road.
What's the definition of the intersection? How far back from the actual intersection is it? If you're on the berm, but you're 100 feet back, but there's 15 cars in line there, but you're on the side there? Is that still at the intersection or is it not?
You know, again, I think, we don't have a feet, a definition in terms of feet. I think each intersection is different in size, but I think from, again, from a commonsense approach, we all know what an intersection involves. And the idea here isn't to ticket people that we find in the intersection soliciting for themselves if we don't have to, it's to get them to a place that's safer, but at least close to the area they want to be. So I, you know, intersection is a term that's used throughout our village code. I don't think there's much confusion about what that has meant over the years. Any comment, Jim, Levicki, on that?
Yeah, I'll say that, you know, the intent is, you know, to draw attention to the actual intersections themselves with, you know, but in, by putting all portions of Route 21, 60, 45, and Butterfield, simply saying along those, along those roads where it intersects-
That's why I was-
Then off that road, right? So like, in the example of Lakeview and 60, you know, someone is on the berm of, on Route 60, we can simply say, listen, you need to be over either on Lakeview, north of the intersection or south of the intersection. Because it, what, I guess what Jim Furlough is saying is that they tend to gravitate towards those places where traffic is coming to a stop. You know, no one's going to be standing on Route 21 in an area where no cars are going to be able to stop because no one's expecting to throw money at them when they're driving by. They're going to be at those intersections, and rather than being, standing on Route 60 and Lakeview, it's safer for them to be on Lakeview, south or north of that actual intersection itself. So I think it's a little bit of terminology, but it's really just, you know, addressing where they're at.
Okay.
Actually, real quick, before we came here, I turned left into, for Portillo's, and there was someone who was there looking for money, and if we want, instead of just intersection, we could add the turn lane also, because I think she kept walking back further along panhandling. I don't know if that helps in the definition, intersection and turn lane, but just a suggestion.
Because if they're on the median there, is that still the intersection? Even though it says below it, it says all portions, but I just hate, would hate to, for there to be a problem down the road. That's why I was thinking, changing it to intersection slash roadway.
Well, the individual does have to step off the berm to go into the traffic area.
No, they can just stand on the berm and just, you know, reach their arm.
The individual I know I've seen gone across, so.
I think the idea here is not to be overly restrictive, right? We want, we don't want to be overly restrictive and have a problem in that regard. I think what we've done so far is reasonable, and I think the intent here is to keep people in a safe place, which might be on the berm or just near a turn lane. I don't think we need to go much farther than we have, and I can tell you this, I mean, I think I've stated it, but somebody walking out into the roadway is violating the Illinois Motor Vehicle Code, causing a danger. So if somebody is doing that, we have other avenues to cite them with, and I think we, our police department might do that.
So, so with Dave's example then, on the actual berm there, if they're in the middle of Route 60 on the berm where the left turn lane is, the turning lane, they're already violating state code or own code? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think that would be, if I'm understanding, maybe I didn't understand Dave correctly. Somebody on Route 60, on a berm on Route 60, would be violating this ordinance.
Well, in, they're on the median between the east and the west lanes, where the turning lane, they could be 150 feet away from the intersection. That's why this language, when it says at all intersections, might not apply, it might not apply to this, but you're suggesting maybe it applies to some other, I don't know. Well, and if this applies, if this applies to anyone doing it, applies to everyone doing it, correct? Even like the groups?
Yes, it applies to anybody soliciting.
Because that's generally how the groups have done it, is they wait at an intersection, and when the light turns red, then they move out into traffic and go, because as a general rule, you're going to want to go to the driver's side window as opposed to the passenger's side window, and is this going to then restrict them from doing that too? I mean, because it does apply across the board, correct?
It has to apply across the board. We cannot treat individuals soliciting for themselves any differently than groups.
And we'll also kind of have to find out what Mundeline's ordinance is regarding this, because, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, aren't we, if you're on Butterfield Road and you're west of the center line, you're actually in Mundeline at 60, correct? Yeah, okay. So that would, so that intersection would be one where we'd have to see what their ordinance fits to, so that we're maybe playing from the same page, hopefully.
Would you like to table this and bring it back in two weeks so we can address some of these issues potentially?
Because, I mean, we've got a wide median there on 60, and that goes, I'm just looking at a satellite view, it goes back 15 cars, so is that still the intersection? It's not really the intersection, that's 60, but they're safe because they're on a median, there's no one, no one's going to hit them there. But I'm suggesting we should change the language to intersection slash roadway to be consistent with the rest of the paragraph. I don't know if that's, if you guys would agree to that or not, but just because the title of it says intersections, but then below it says all portions, so, I mean, I might be mincing words, but some-
Yeah, I think it's possible to put those things in there. I would just like to add one thing as far as the intent and our purpose in this is to be able to, you know, have an ordinance that is, you know, number one, constitutionally correct, and number two, it just gives us the latitude, not necessarily to enforce, to be able to use this for enforcement actions, but more of just being able to guide people to, these are the particular areas that we feel are safer, not 100% safe, but safer, to get them off of the major roadways. And as Jim Furlough indicated, if someone is in violation of that, someone's walking in the road impeding traffic, we have other avenues to pursue. So the intent of this isn't to give us another tool in our toolbox, it's really more to make sure we're compliant, and then also so we can, you know, guide people to a safer area. So if that makes any difference in the actual verbiage of this, I'd just like to offer that.
So, so as of right now, if someone were in this really long median on 60, you would stop them and say, get off of the median there?
Yeah, we'd just let them know, hey, listen, you know, like I said, we'll use 60 and Lakeview as an example. Yeah, these are the areas, you know, that are a little bit safer, why don't you head over to, you know, to here? You know, and guide them to particular areas. So that's the intent and the purpose of this, and so I just wanted to offer that part in there.
Okay. And what enforcement rights do you have? I mean, is there actually a penalty for this, or are they violating your order if they?
We do have, you know, the option for what we call a municipal ticket, which is, you know, more or less, I want to say glorified parking ticket, but it's a ticket nonetheless. We do have the option of the Illinois Vehicle Code, you know, regular, like a moving ticket, you know, like I said, if someone's impeding traffic. So there's a couple of options that I have at my disposal, and really, the intent in this is for us to be able to provide someone with a better avenue to go to versus taking enforcement action against somebody. Because that really is the spirit of the law, is that, you know, we really can't be taking enforcement action against certain people, we could certainly, you know, make it a little bit safer for them overall. Because that's the concern, is not necessarily that we're chasing these people out of town, is that we're not, you know, putting our citizens and our residents and our motor vehicles at risk of striking somebody that's putting themselves in a spot where they've deemed to be the most worthy of earning some money, but might necessarily be the safest place for them to be.
So do we, do we, what's the board's pleasure? Do you want to vote on this one tonight, or do you want to table it to the next meeting and let council look at some of the concerns we brought up? Or are we clear? I don't think we need to table it as long as Mr. Furlough is fine with, if he doesn't feel like we need to change it. My final question though is regarding, just to clarify, you said that if they're on private property, they do have to get the approval?
Private commercial property, for example, a strip center. Unless there's signage out there or they've been notified, the solicitors have been notified that they can't solicit, they're allowed to solicit there. So that's up to the private, the owner of the private center to determine how they want that to go. If signage is posted that says that no soliciting, no peddling is allowed, individuals are deemed to be on notice, the police department can be called, and if they refuse to leave, they can be ticketed for trespassing. Short of some type of notice that they are not welcome, the solicitors are not welcome on commercial property, they will be allowed, they will be allowed to solicit there. Anything on that, Jim?
Yeah, I, just so you guys are aware, I brought Commander Shannon Halybats with me today, and Shannon has worked with Jim Furlough as well as Chief Kreese and tried to address this portion of it, because as we know, we've got the portion of it when people are out in the public, but then when they're in a private, and these are calls of service that we receive, and we want to be able to address this proactively.
Certainly, we received a number of complaints recently regarding solicitation, panhandling on private property. We recognize that, you know, certainly there's room for us to act here, obviously. We want to do that constitutionally as well. I think we recognize that there is a fair amount of education that can be done with our property managers, and that's how we intend to pursue this. I have worked with our municipal prosecutors, and using this municipal citation process Deputy Chief Levicki has spoken about, we have mapped out a process whereby we can adopt some, or property managers can adopt some recommended verbiage for signs to be posted on their property that will allow us to notice all persons entering their property that panhandling is strictly prohibited, and would be construed then as trespassing. That would allow us then to issue trespass citations to those individuals on first contact, whereas now, we would have to have multiple encounters with them, and they would have to have had received prior notice that they aren't welcome on that property. I think we are aggressively right now pursuing a strategy where we can communicate with property managers, let them know that they have this option, and provide them with examples of that signage to where we can adopt this system moving forward, and hopefully address some of these concerns about the panhandling on private property. You know, necessarily, unfortunately, we have to address what's occurring on the public roadways as a separate matter.
Okay, and other questions or comments for anyone?
Yeah, I got one comment. Can anybody, can anybody hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
You can hear me.
Yeah, my comment is, I mean, you know, how, not that it's not enforceable, but I mean, how many people actually come to the village and get a license of sorts to solicit at your door? Does anybody want to speak to that? Did any of these groups from, you know, pest control to lawn control to, you know, aluminum siding, do they come in and physically get some kind of a license from the village? And the answer is what, no?
I could help with that. They do come to the village hall, Mr. Mayor. It's a general estimate, but I'd say we get, we issue about 30 solicitor licenses per year. That's just a general estimate, could be a little more, a little less. But we do issue-
But I mean, you know, how do these people know? I mean, what do we, you know, what do we lay out there that would get communicated to any and all groups? And it's, you know, it's a tough, tough question because there's so many different people that might knock on your door, you know?
Yeah, yeah, the idea is, per the village ordinance, when they submit for a solicitor's license, there's a background check that's performed, then they pay their fee, we issue their license, and then they can legally go from door to door, provided there's no notice saying no solicitors, they can go ahead and solicit. The advantage of that is if someone doesn't have a solicitor's license, and if the village receives a complaint without that solicitor's license, then we can take enforcement action and ask that they leave the neighborhood.
Yeah, but it's contingent upon the homeowner to trigger that process, right?
That's correct.
And Mr. President, I'm sorry.
I'm not saying it's an easy situation to actually, you know, monitor and or control, you know, but do we pass out, do we have solicitor, you know, no soliciting, you know, decals for people's homes? Or is that, you got to go to the hardware store and get them?
We have them here at the village hall for a charge, I think the PD has them as well.
Yes, we have them as well. And I believe Attorney Furlough can maybe enlighten us a little bit on Section 15-41 as far as the exceptions to having a solicitor's permit.
Correct, in fact, that's the one I was just going to make, thank you, Officer Levicki.
Why don't we, you know, at least let people know via all our electronic media newsletter and so on, that, you know, hey, you want a sticker, we got them.
We can do that, but-
Okay.
We'll do, and Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that, under our village code, which makes this even more difficult, we have a number of exceptions for groups that do not have to get a permit to solicit even door to door. Political organizations, charitable, religious, where they're not soliciting for commercial purposes, they don't require a permit, so I think that's part of the point you're making, that it's very difficult to distinguish who needs a permit versus who doesn't.
Right, no, I understand, I mean, you know, I know, like the Knights of Columbus, I'm a member of it, and, you know, I mean, they always come in, you know, or Alliance Club, because there's certain organizations that come in annually, they ask for permission, you know, to collect at the street corners, you know what I mean? But not, obviously not everybody does it, so. Do we need to vote on anything?
Yeah, is there a, is, are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2021-125?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion a second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Schenk?
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other new business or communication to come before us? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and go to committee of the whole. We will do the closed session thing at the end of the committee.
After the committee of the whole, correct.
All right.
Yep.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn to go into committee of the whole?
No, no.
Just motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that at the end of committee.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, okay. Do we need another motion for chairman for the?
Yes, motion to appoint trustee Cook as temporary chair, please, for the committee of the whole meeting.
So made.
Second?
Roll call please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Takaoka?
Aye.
Schenk?
Forster? Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Markport?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. So, first item of business is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes from, um, it was October 5th, right?
It says October.
Yeah, it says October. So it's October 5th, correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve for October 5th.
Yeah, the agenda says, wrong, the agenda has the 19th, that's tonight, though, so. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah, okay, motion a second.
Voice vote's fine on that.
Voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I abstain.
The ayes have it, one abstention. All right, next item then is the request from the Vernon Hills Park District for approval of site landscaping and architectural elevations to allow the building addition and parking lot expansion to the Lakeview Fitness Center located at 700 Lakeview Parkway.
Thank you trustee Cook. Representatives of the Vernon Hills Park District will present their plans. Real quick, the addition is off the, generally off the southeast corner of the building, it's 3,300 square feet. There'd also be a parking lot expansion that would increase the parking capacity from 107 to 133 spaces. Because this is located in Continental Executive Park, they are not required, and because it doesn't require plat approval- because it doesn't require plat approval, they are not required to appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. They simply need to go before the board for approval of their project. So after their presentation, and if the committee of the whole thinks it's appropriate, staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the site landscaping and architectural revisions subject to the conditions of approval that are attached to your packet. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Vernon Hills Park District.
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Hoosieru, Executive Director of the Vernon Hills Park District. With me is James Kim, who is our park superintendent, oversees the projects that, that this particular project is gonna be placed, and then our architect from Williams Architect, this is Scott Morlock, who's our project architect. So, let me, let me go through this, and you've got the site plan here. I'm gonna turn this over to Scott Morlock, our architect, to go through it. Certainly, we'll be here with any questions, but before we do this, I just wanted to kind of preface the board and the mayor with, this project was presented to us back in March of this year, where we were notified through the Department of Natural Resources that we were the recipient of what's called a park grant. Don't mind, I'm gonna pull my mask down-
Sure.
...to speak, but the park grant, the P-A-R-C, is a Park and Recreation Construction Act. It was a grant that the district applied for back in January of 2018, and it basically sat. And we were one of 150 park districts that applied for this grant, and there were 11 park districts throughout the state that received funding for it. So we were one of 11 recipients out of 150. We received a grant for $2.24 million for renovation for this Lakeview project, and it's a 75-25 split with the, with the Department of Natural Resources. So our commitment was 25% of that. So, the, the project in total and the budget is about 3.5 million, so we're putting a little bit more in to this project than the necessary 25% that we're required to. We're looking to commence construction in March of next year, and the project is scheduled to be completed by October of next year. So, a big component of the project is we're completely gutting the indoor pool. If you've been inside the pool since its inception, it was a four-lane pool, four-lane lap lane, seven-feet-wide lanes, and there's a large play structure and an indoor slide. And so the future project, we're removing the indoor play structure. We're gonna still have a zero-depth area with some surface-mounted bubblers. We'll show that to you in the, in the design. We're removing the slide, but the big, the big thing is we're adding six lap lanes, going from four to six lanes for our membership, and we're widening those lanes from seven feet to eight feet is really the required width that we would like, so at least two people at a time can swim in the, in the lanes comfortably. And we're redoing the surfacing, we're redoing the spa area, the whirlpool, sauna, steam room, and then we're keeping all the exterior windows, which is a great, a great view. There's a lot of mechanical work that has to be done in the pool. The surfacing itself of the, of the pool area is gonna be redone, and then we'll show you some of the floor plans here, what we're doing. An addition outside, there's a little over 3,000-square-foot addition that we'd be putting into the northwest corner, where we're gonna add more fitness floor so that we, and then we're also gonna be expanding off to the west with an outdoor fitness patio. Since the COVID inception, you know, we're running classes outdoors under a tent in the back parking lot. Those are extremely popular, people like to exercise outside, so that was one of the implements that the, the design team came up with, so that we can continue to address people that wanna continue to work out outdoors. And so we've got a really unique feature that we'll share with you tonight. So I'm gonna turn it over to Scott at this point.
Good evening. As Jeff mentioned, my name is Scott Morlock with Williams Architects, and we'll just kind of quickly run through the plans for the proposed alterations to the Lakeview Fitness Center. Up in front of you, you can see the site plan, and I hope it's a little more clearer on your monitors than it is on this screen up here, but the orientation of the site plan, Lakeview Parkway, is up at the top of the screen, and you can see the addition, the proposed addition to the building is kind of at the, well, sort of at the upper right of the existing building there, with the proposed fitness patio directly above it, facing Lakeview Avenue. One of the primary aspects of the site, proposed site improvements is the expansion of the parking lot. We're going, we're adding a net, there's a net add of 22 spaces there to the parking lot. That would bring the total to, I believe it was 133 spaces, and that was the count, that's the count in the parking lot, which is to the west of the building. There is an additional lot to the east of the building, which is primarily for staff parking, which there are no improvements planned for. The other improvements to the site, there's mainly just, there's a very small expansion of the, of the detention area, the existing detention area down there at the south end of the site, to compensate for the additional impervious area of the addition in the parking lot. And then, the other major, the other item on the site is that the park district wished to do a little bit of regrading to the berm, which is between the building and Lakeview Parkway, to provide a better view of the building as you drive down the street. You wanna go to the landscape plan? So this looks like the same drawing, but there's a little bit more information on this regarding the proposed landscaping that the park district was proposing. We're doing, showing some landscaping around the new, around the current main entrance, another area of landscaping to, between the, the proposed parking expansion and Lakeview Parkway, and then some additional landscaping between the addition and Lakeview Parkway as well. I don't know if we wanna speak about that a little more, Jeff, or if we just wanna move forward with the floor plan?
You can just go.
Okay. Why don't we move forward with the floor plan, then? So, this is the floor plan you can see here, and the addition, again, is in the upper right-hand portion of this, and in the addition, you can see an expanded fitness space, and then over to the side, there's some staff offices and a staff training room. So the expanded fitness would be open to the current fitness space, which is adjacent to it there. We're proposing some remodeling to that existing fitness, and then, of course, as implied, yeah, we would expand into the new fitness space as well, so it'd be a much larger area. And then there is a proposed fitness patio directly outside, as Jeff had mentioned. That would be to accommodate various group exercise classes during good weather. And then, over to the left of the exercise, or the fitness area, is a new group exercise room. That is currently the weight room, but that space is being renovated to become another space for group exercise activities. The other component of the remodeling is the renovated pool, as Jeff had mentioned. So, there you can see, there would now be six swimming lanes, kind of at the top portion of that pool, and then at the bottom portion, there would be the zero-depth area with some spray features, surface-mounted spray features, as Jeff had mentioned earlier, along that area. And the net auditorium is receiving, in addition to the renovated pool, it's receiving, receiving some upgrades in the finishes as well. And then, there are some selected renovations to certain spaces as well in the, the men's and women's locker areas, which are those colored spaces that you see there. Some light renovations, things like new partitions, reconfigured shower spaces, some changing areas, and a new single-user toilet, or single-user toilet, all-gender toilet changing room facing the pool deck. We wanna go on to the elevations. You can see the proposed elevations for the addition here. The one in the upper right-hand corner of the screen is the elevation that would be facing Lakeview Avenue, and then the one to the left of that would be around that corner facing basically east, and then a very small section of elevation facing west there on the bottom, just as, as the building just projects out beyond the existing building a little bit. Why don't we go on to the rendering, because that kind of tells, gives a much clearer picture of what the proposed design is for the exterior. So this is the view from Lakeview Parkway of the addition. The idea here is that the park district wanted to create something that would be kind of a little more prominent, prominent, kind of a, a feature of this side of the building facing Lakeview. The existing building has kind of a, a nondescript elevation facing Lakeview right now, so it was, the desire was to create something that was a little more attractive, would draw your eye to the building a little bit more. And we are, the idea was to pick up on some of the materials on the existing building while creating kind of a new look for this area of the building. So the material, proposed materials on the addition would involve stone, a stone veneer, picking up on kind of the color and the texture of the current banding that's running around the existing building, that light banding that you see. There's some large areas of glass. We have also some composite metal panels above those areas of glass. Composite metal panels are currently used on the existing building around the current entrance, at the current entrance canopy, so we're picking up on that material. Composite metal panels also around the new fascia of the addition, and again, that same metal around the column covers at the canopy. And at the soffit, that you can see at the canopy, that would be a metal soffit, but with a wood look to it. And I think that's about it on the materials, so.
This is, this, this, this perspective you see is the new outdoor fitness patio that we're proposing, and would have a, what we call, we use a ported place surface, we use them on our playgrounds. Kind of, you know what, Kids Castle Playground, where you got that kind of soft, spongy surface? Same type of surface flooring surface that we would propose for the exterior of this. So it's easier on people's joints as they're, you know, outdoors there. James Kim, our park superintendent, behind me, you can see, you know, these are some of the, we wanted to screen this. From this perspective of, of Lakeview Parkway, again, it's, there's a pretty large berm there right now, which would prohibit a view if you're driving in your car. You can't really see much of the building here, and so we wanted to open up just a section of that berming to allow people, you know, imagine you're coming out of the post office and you're heading towards like, you know, 60, you could get a nice optic of the building there, a nice covered, you know, portion of the building. So we wanted to, to kind of showcase that as well, but at the same time, provide screening for our members that are working out outside, so they don't feel like they're a showcase, if you will. So that's, that's the exterior part. And then, I think we, I think that was it, right, Scott?
That was it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So that overhang, does that completely cover that soft-material patio? It's hard to tell from this perspective.
You know, I got one question. What, how many square feet is being added to the existing building?
The addition is roughly 3,300 square feet.
Okay. And then, and then there's gonna be parking elsewhere?
Yes, there's gonna be a net add of 22 parking spaces to the current parking lot.
And they'll be near the front west of the building?
Correct.
So is that in the floodplain?
No.
Dave?
None.
Brown?
Yes, sir, they're, they're on the right track in terms of the floodplain and their mitigation. We're well along on the stormwater issues, and it is not of concern.
Okay. So, so these parking spaces are closer to Lakeview Parkway?
The parking spaces are off of the existing parking lot.
Yes, they're close to Lakeview Parkway, that's correct. So between, basically between the existing building and Lakeview Parkway.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
Oh, where the floodgalls are.
And we, just for the record, Kevin, we, we released the money from, what was it, Focus and the folks from Centennial?
Yes, I believe that is on tonight's payment of bills, so that should be going out, I think, tomorrow.
Right. And that was what, over $600,000?
Well, there were impact fees from the Everly Project, Hawthorne 2.0, and then some Polte and Woodland Chase, so I think the total is closer to 1.8, 1.9 million.
About 1.8, 9 million?
Somewhere in that range, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay.
And, yeah, Trustee Oppenheim's question?
Yes, an answer to your question. Yes, the roof covers the entire flooring surface. Yes.
And you're gonna be getting rid of, it looks like, some of the trees that are along Lakeview Parkway, so that you can see the, the frontage better? It looks like there's some big trees there.
A lot of those trees are dead.
Oh, they're dead now?
And invasive, and so, just, you know, we take a tree down, we put a tree up.
Sure.
And so, you know, there's an even match of what's being removed is gonna be replaced with new, new plants.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Staff have any concerns or any comments?
No comments from staff.
Okay.
We think the project is a great improvement to the facility.
Yeah, which I would encourage, this looks, it looks very good. Should be, you know, especially the nicer view of that corner.
Actually, I got a question outside of this. Like, what's, what's the membership here? How many members do you have?
Currently, we're at about 1,500.
Oh, okay. What's a family membership cost here?
When we purchased the, the property, we were at about 2,500.
Right.
So, obviously with COVID, we've had some competition in the community too, which we've lost some membership to as well, so.
What's a family membership cost there?
So, a family is, or an individual, individual's about $500 a year.
Oh.
For, for a senior, it's about, it's about 400.
Uh huh.
For a couple, we, it's about 750. And then there's increments depending on your age, Craig, and, you know-
The number of kids?
It, we, it's like an extra, like, eight or nine dollars a month to add a, add a child.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we do have complimentary memberships for all village officials in terms of our agreement, so we'd love to see the mayor get back out there in our-
Really?
-mayor get in our pool again when we get-
Yeah, no shit. Hey, you know, Jeff, God only knows, I, I need it.
Yes, we'd love to see you back.
After going through my, the, the good doctor there could just tell you, I had a deep ride, some two wounds on my right leg today, so, yeah, I gotta get my-
Yeah, TMI for this-
Yeah, yeah.
-meeting right now.
So, any other questions or concerns about this project from the board?
No.
Okay, then is there a motion? What do we need, a motion to direct?
To direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving the site landscaping and architectural drawings in accordance with the conditions that are attached to your packet.
Is there a motion to that effect?
A motion.
So, so made, and I'll second it.
So made.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, a second. If there are no additional questions or concerns, roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Schenk. Takaoka.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Sounds like a nice project, just for the record, so.
Okay, next item of business, the arcade at Hawthorne, 122 Hawthorne Center, Unit 614. Consideration of a report and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of a special use permit to allow an arcade for electronic games.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. If I could give you a quick summary, the proposed new business will be located in the space that was formerly occupied by Sprint and Hawthorne Mall. The arcade would include approximately 20 amusement devices and a space that is 1,160 square feet. Food and beverage would not be offered for sale as part of this business operation. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on October 13th to consider the special use permit, and in their deliberations, they determined that the arcade was appropriate and will be a complimentary use to the mall that would help drive traffic actually to the property. And on a motion of six in favor and zero against, they recommended approval of the special use permit, allowing an arcade with electronic games. So, tonight, if the COW concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and believes that the special use permit is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance- an ordinance approving the special use permit subject to the conditions outlined in your packet. And the owner of Arcade at Hawthorne is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Uh, you want to give us your, your name and?
Yeah, uh, so my name's Stephen Kristoff. Um, I'm the S in SR Amusements, which is the, uh, or RS Amusements, we're interchangeable, but, uh, that is the like parent company of Arcade at Hawthorne, or at Hawthorne Mall, uh, provided this goes well today. Um, we, uh, we also have a duplicate location within Gurnee Mills. Uh, my family has, uh, been in the entertainment world my entire life, so, uh, the 31 years that I've been here, I've been involved in the arcade and amusement industry. My family owns Kristoff's Entertainment Center in Round Lake Beach. If you've ever been there, wonderful. Uh, if you had a bad time, sorry, I'm not associated with them. Uh, but, uh, I've, I've been in the arcade industry my entire life. I kind of have lived and breathed it and, uh, through COVID, um, uh, my partner and I, Rob, who isn't able to be here, he just, uh, recently had a child, so he's at home doing daddy stuff. Um, but through COVID, um, you know, we really identified the, the things that we like within the arcade industry and, uh, opened our, our location in Gurnee Mills. Um, that's been, you know, successful and, and a pleasant experience and, uh, in deciding to expand it, you know, the, the natural next choice was to, uh, choose Hawthorne Mall. Some of that he and I both grew up, know, are familiar with and are excited about the expansions that obviously you guys are all well aware of with Hawthorne 2.0 and thought we'd make an excellent complement to that. And here we are today. So, hi.
Okay. Um, anybody have any questions or comments regarding this? It looks fairly straightforward, especially since the commission voted 6-0.
Agreed from staff's perspective.
Okay.
How long has the arcade been in Gurnee Mills?
Um, so we opened it, um, excuse me, uh, just after the holidays, probably it's approaching a year now, so.
And how is it done?
It's been good. Um, you know, we, so being in the arcade industry for a long time, we, we went in, uh, prepared, um, we chose equipment that we thought would complement, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, which is, uh, a low budget experience in that, not low budget from its presentation, but low budget from the standpoint that you can hand a child five, $10 and they can have five, $10 worth of fun and continue on with shopping within the mall, things like that. Um, and, uh, the reception's been wonderful, you know, uh, honestly, you know, coming, going through COVID and everything, I think people are more conscious of their, themselves and their surroundings as well. Um, the space that we currently have in Gurnee Mills has been treated actually exceptionally, uh, respectfully. Um, it, it, we keep it clean, we keep it nice, um, and our customers respect that as well. One of the cool things, and, uh, the reason we chose the Sprint space that we're, we're looking at within Hawthorne is its proximity to the food court. Um, it makes it where, you know, it becomes a compliment to the additional, uh, things that exist within the mall. But since it is a, uh, short timeframe transaction, uh, people will walk in with a soda, but they're not there long enough necessarily to finish the soda. So despite the fact that we have lots of trash cans, lots of ways for people to dispose of things, uh, oftentimes the trash refuse, things like that, uh, exit our space as well. Um, and then owning arcades and being in arcades my whole life, um, there's always, you know, damage vandalism, things like that. And, uh, we've actually experienced like little to no damage or vandalism within our space, which has actually been, uh, both surprising and extremely positive from our side and was one of the, the big factors in why we decided we wanted to continue to expand it, uh, into additional markets, so.
Yeah, I got a question. So your hours of operation?
Same as the mall. Um, it's an inline space.
Okay.
And the store technically wouldn't, uh, the doors don't open or close, so, uh, the same as like a food court space where the, the frontage is kind of always open, but the store itself shuts down.
Right. So look, I grew up in the eighties where arcades were huge, right? But I'm thinking with kids, when do they start coming in there? I mean, your traffic really has got to be after school, during the week and then weekends.
Our, our primary customer is the family. Um, so, you know, mom at the, at the mall with her kids during the day, uh, things are generally pretty light, but, um, our, our primary customer is after school, at the mall, shopping with mom. They sit down at the food court, they have, uh, you know, Panda Express or whatever and, you know, the kids get antsy, they throw them five bucks, they run over, play a couple games and mom gets to go back to me.
So how many tokens you get for five bucks?
Uh, so we operate on a game card system. We do that, uh, specifically so that there aren't issues of like coin jams, operational issues, things like that, and allow us to shut games down remotely. Uh, for five dollars, generally you can play somewhere between five to 10 games. We try and keep prices under a dollar, um, in the range of 50 cents to a dollar per play.
And you got to do a lot of volume to.
You know, it, it goes surprisingly well. Um, you know, it's, it's, the nice thing is, is that it is, it's a quick transaction. You get the, you know, periodic customer that'll, you know, come and spend 20 to 40 dollars, but, um, it's designed to, you know, be something that people can stop in, play and leave and, and have fun, have those experiences. The games that we choose are typically games that encourage two-player play. Uh, so like air hockey or a racing game or things like that, that encourage, you know, mom or dad to sit down with the kid or the kids to play against each other, um, in a way that kind of promotes, you know, unity and playing together, uh, rather than the trend of gaming that has existed, which is more either within the amusement industry, win as many tickets as you can and get a prize, um, or in the at-home or, uh, you know, gaming industry of very individualized, more competitive play.
Got Pac-Man?
Uh, we do in our Gurnee location. I, I would expect that it'll find its way here as well.
Maybe you want to get, aim at a older crowd. Defender, remember that game?
In, uh, Defender doesn't. Well, those games don't get that much play unless they're in a, like a bar environment.
Okay.
Um, but like the classics like Pac-Man Frogger, things like that, things that, uh, people have nostalgia towards, um, are what we try to, you know, encourage people to play. In my personal life, I'm a pinball enthusiast, so, uh, you know, I collect and repair pinball machines in my, in my spare time because, you know, games.
I know trustee Marport and I are both can, trying to figure out where you got your Pac-Man jacket, so it's like.
Uh, well, I have matching pants and a tie as well, but I, I ran low on time today.
That's, that's right up trustee Marport's.
Up my alley.
Yeah, so, uh, it was from, uh, Oppo Suits. I, uh, is who I got it from. So O P P O, that's the, uh, the suit company.
So are you going to have pinball machines as well, or?
Um, pinball machines, we have a pinball machine in our Gurnee location. Um, it doesn't perform spectacularly. Um, typically in order for pinball to really do well, we have to have several, um, but they, they are the highest maintenance of the, uh, of the arcade games. So, uh, if we do, we'll likely have, you know, one or two newer pinball machines, but currently I don't think our, our game mix, uh, includes a pinball machine, uh, provided it's approved and we get open, so.
Okay, any other questions or concerns?
I was just going to say, I walk a, walk a, walk a mall in favor of this.
Okay.
Sorry, I just had to do that.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve as?
Uh, to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, uh, approving a special use permit allowing an arcade for electronic games, subject to the conditions outlined in your packet.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion a second. Um, if there's no other discussion, roll call please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forester.
Aye.
Schenk. Takaoka.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck, welcome to town.
Appreciate it.
Hey, I have one question though.
Whoa.
When, when you played a game, what's that?
Sorry, I was almost out the door.
Yeah.
You caught me last second there. I had to matrix it back here.
I just wanted to ask you one question. If you shake the, uh, pinball game, does it tilt?
Uh, the pinball machines do tilt. In fact, I know you can't see it, but I'm wearing a T-shirt that says, "You shall not tilt." Uh, it's a, it's a wizard saying it. He's a pinball wizard, so.
Nice. All right, nice.
All right. Thank you. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Okay, um, next item of business is, uh, parking proposal, Bay Hill at Greg's Landing North restrictions?
Uh, thank you very much. At Bay Hill at Greg's Landing North, uh, we've, we're contacted by the HOA in terms of some concerns about parking towards the entrance. Uh, the majority of the subdivision actually has very limited opportunities for parking throughout, uh, so therefore we're finding more of the service type vehicles that, uh, park more towards the entrance. We're all familiar with the, uh, with Crenshaw. Uh, when you first enter to the east side is, uh, Lake County Public Works' Reservoir. Um, it has a longer area and that's where people tend to park. Uh, this roadway is very typical. It's a 27-foot back-to-back, uh, which is a typical residential street. In this ti- uh, location, we're actually finding where vehicles are on both sides of the roadway. So, um, in consultation with the HOA and, uh, Mr. Gross is here, uh, should you have any specific questions for the HOA, um, but there is a specific concern. So, uh, staff reviewed that, uh, there was discussions amongst the HOA board and, uh, they found that, uh, what the proposal was, that they are in agreement with it, which would be to restrict parking along the southbound lane, essentially from Greg's Parkway north. Goes about three driveways, but more specifically there is a off-street parking area and it's right adjacent to that as the map shows.
Well, and there's no reason to extend it any further north because once you get north at that point, almost that entire side of the street is curb cuts for parking pads, correct?
Correct.
Cause, so this would be prohibiting parking on that side of the street to the corner?
Yes, sir. And should the board agree with staff's recommendation, we would, uh, prepare the necessary ordinances for, uh, consideration at the next board meeting.
Yeah, well, with a width of 27, it, it, one-side parking is, is really actually a much better situation. Um, any comments or questions from the board?
It's like a, good solution.
Yeah, okay. So what, um...
We vote.
What's the motion to direct staff to?
Motion to directing staff to prepare the necessary ordinance to restrict parking as, uh, proposed, uh, in my presentation.
Okay. Is there a motion to that extent?
Prove then.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forester.
Aye.
Schenk. Takaoka.
Hello.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, okay? Thank you.